On the agenda, we request that you, we request that you fill out a green speaker request card and turn it to staff prior to the agenda item. Get the card right to back over here. And just as a reminder, the VP has been reported available via Zoom. The planning commission will receive public comment and appeal prior to the meeting to staff or in person. Public comments will not be accepted via Zoom. On your roll call, please.
Chair Rondo?
Here.
Vice Chairman Saeed?
Here.
Commissioner Madden and Commissioner Harmon?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson is absent. Commissioner Ken? Commissioner Levin? Levin, sorry.
Okay, thank you. We're, we're small fighting here. Commissioner Harmon, can you take us in the pledge, please, sir?
Like, they'll leave it in. She'll be the planner. States there to the Republic, which stands one nation. We need as all other nations to start.
Check, you know, what is made Tuesday, May twenty first. Are there any edits? Our chain is needed to the minutes. Click through the chain, please. The the capture of the votes are not right. Commissioner Harmon, the name is mentioned a couple of times for the same vote. And Commissioner Madden, who was absent, is listed as one to get into voting. So we need to review those before.
Yeah, the votes will be corrected and changed before this time.
Thank you. Things are added to the minutes. So I'm having to end the same motion to. Item number three, an offset conflict of interest. Do any of the commissioners have any comments that they like to articulate in this format? See the new ones go strings. It's time on the agenda. Is there anyone here that wants to address the planning division for any item that's out of your agenda's name? Staff Bruno, Eric West.
Oh, and my admission, Michael Smith, planning department staff. So the project for you is one eleven San Bruno Avenue. So I have with me today on this project, the Allen Kids Development LLC, represented by Larry Lee. Also, the project architect, Moshe Dinar, is available as well. So the format for tonight's meeting, I'm going to provide a background on the project, do a project overview, and then wrap up with the staff recommendation. The format's going to be a presentation, and then I'll take all opportunities for questions at the end of my presentation. So project context, the project site is one eleven San Bruno Avenue West. The owner of is San Bruno Development LLC. The site in question is eighteen thousand and twenty-five square feet. The general plan land use is transit oriented development, and the zoning for the site is PD, which is planned development. Here's some photos of the site and the vicinity. The site is located directly across the street from the San Bruno County train station. The site is currently vacant. The adjacent property to the south is in the upper right hand corner, and that is seven sixty-one, seven sixty-seven Huntington Avenue. So those of you who were here back in twenty eighteen might recall the project that was approved for this site. In twenty eighteen, a five-story mixed-use building with sixty-two units was approved for the site. At that time, it also included seven sixty-one to seven sixty-seven Huntington Avenue, which is a shopping center located just south of the property. And for that reason, it was, the site was a bit bigger. It was point six one acres. That approval took the site and we rezoned it from its previous zoning of commercial to this current PD, which is the planned development. The adjacent property owner for seven sixty-one, seven sixty-seven is no longer involved in the project. To that property is now. So now to the project itself. So what we're, what is being proposed is a five-story mixed-use building similar to before. Sixty-seven thousand square feet change, which is smaller than the previous project. It would have twenty-six hundred seventy square feet of ground floor commercial space. Forty-six housing units, seven of which would be below market rate units. Forty-eight parking spaces, a roof deck with four residents and resident amenity space. The FAR for this project is that three point seven six five is what's being proposed. And also, the approvals here tonight, we're proposing to rezone the site from its PD, which we established in twenty eighteen, to TOD one. I'll go into further details about that in a second. Included with the project is they're proposing to remove the lane on Huntington Avenue. And that would provide an opportunity for enhanced sidewalk and bold out at the corner. This was also a feature of the two thousand eight, two thousand eighteen approval as well, which was reviewed and approved by the commission and the council back in twenty eighteen. So lane removal will provide space for an enhanced sidewalk and bold out of the corner and create on-street parking spaces as well as on-street loading spaces in front of the site. The space will also be created for new street trees, as shown on this slide. This is the ground floor plan, and so you can see towards the bottom right of the screen is enhanced bowl out near of San Bruno Avenue and Huntington Avenue. The site is kind of wide and not very deep. If you're looking at it from Huntington Avenue, you can see where the the garage entrances off, there's two garage entrances to the site. One off of San Bruno Avenue, which is on the side, and then one Huntington Avenue, which is on the bottom. Although right turn in and right turn out. And then you can see the commercial space is at the corner next to the bowl out sidewalk. And so the, the parking is very much wrapped by the space, so keep space, plug and see. So the project also requires an architectural review permit, which is required for any new building. The modern design of the building includes a mixture of materials and colors, and the site will include street trees and landscaping. Materials include spent cluster finish, vertical and horizontal harding length siding, mineral composite cladding. That thinset porcelain tile finish is proposed at the base of the building. An aluminum trellis is proposed at the ground floor level, which will have the ability to accommodate channel lettering for signage for the commercial use. Aluminum trellis is also proposed at the fifth floor level, which provides additional architectural interest. The guardrails for the individual balconies, which you see, consist of a combination of tempered glass and wood finish. Scale-wise, the building would not exceed the height limit other than the permitted abstractions on the roof. That's as a nice transition from the budding low-density residential uses. The, the project again introduces ground floor commercial space right at the corner of the development. And then also it's important to note that this is, this site is considered catalytic site number two within the Transit Corridor Plan. And that means it was identified as being catalytic because it would help stimulate development and significantly influence and transform the overall area. So on this slide, I just wanted to see two images of the project, so you can see how similar it was to two thousand eighteen. Other than the length of the building, there's probably not much you can see as a difference, so pretty much bringing the same project, just a little bit smaller, and it doesn't include that adjacent property. So the applicant is requesting tentative track map for this as well. That track map would create forty-six individual residential condominiums, as well as one condominium at the ground floor. Project also requires an affordable housing plan because a product of the size requires that there be a minimum of fifteen percent of the units on site to be below market rate. Project again will meet that requirement by providing seven affordable housing units for very low-income households. And I'll go into more detail further on the presentation about what that means. And the units, those units will be distributed throughout the building and distributed by unit type. And so this is the floor plan of how the units will be distributed. You can see they're on all four floors, and their different colors correspond to the different unit types inside us. The applicant is also requesting a density bonus for this project. So for the density bonus, because the project provides all fifteen percent of the units that would be below market rate would be designed, available for very low-income households. And that means the project qualifies for fifty percent density bonus. So the base density for this project, as we've established, is thirty-one units. Fifty percent would be an extra sixteen units. And that would bring it up to forty-seven. Also pursuant to same density bonus law, the applicant has requested waivers and concessions from some of our development standards. Those are discussed in more detail, listed on the slide here, but discussed in more detail on staff report. In addition to the density bonus, the applicant is requesting to utilize AB twenty ninety-seven. So the code otherwise required eighty-two parking spaces on this very small site. But using AB twenty ninety-seven, it exempts the city from requiring any parking for housing projects like this within a half mile of a transit station. This one is obviously right across the street from the transit station. So that would mean, according to the law, that they would have to fight any parking for this. But they are providing forty-eight total parking spaces. All of those parking spaces would be in a mechanical parking list. And all of those parking spaces would be reserved for the residential units, so there will be a parking dedicated to the commercial space, which again is twenty-six hundred seventy square. Also, as part of the project, as I said earlier, we will be rezoning the site. So I'm not sure if you remember, but twenty twenty-one, the city did rezone a whole TCP, actually. And to create the mixed-use zoning. And so what we're doing here is removing the PD, the PD which we established in twenty eighteen. Because it's a vestige, because it no longer has PD properties in it any longer since seven sixty-one. So, so it's basically obsolete. There's nothing you can really do with it. And it's just cleaner to rezone the both sites and put it back into the TOD. It'll also make it easier for the property owner of seven sixty-one, seven sixty-seven to re-tenant their space because you just simply go to the TOD zoning in the code and see what's, what's allowed, as opposed to having to try to find the old see what uses are allowed at that, if they're allowed in twenty thirteen. So we're getting rid of that. That property owner has been notified. This rezone we have changed. And they're, so they're, we're, I'm not sure if they're in meeting state, we've had a number of conversations, and they do not object. And then also I just want to know that because this is a rezoning, rezoning is a legislative action. So city council will be the final body on this one, so. And the action you take today will be recommendations to the city council. So because the project is in the TCP, they are subject to the TCP rehab process. And that applicant did the applicant-sponsored meeting back in February of twenty twenty-three. Also did the ARC meeting later on in February of twenty twenty-three, so both of those were done. The project was received very favorably by the ARC. It was forwarded to PC without modification. And then additionally, since the notices have gone out this meeting here tonight, staff has not received any, any public comment on the project. And we sent out notices to property owners of the, of the site. So additional information. The project is subject to AOUC review, which is the Airport Plant Use Commission. We did that in twenty eighteen. We spoke to staff at the AOUC. They looked at the plant for the new project, determined that it was similar enough to the old project that it did not have to go through with two one, so that was taken care of. Additionally, the project is now subject to CTAG's TDM policy. And so that, that has been found to be consistent, and they, they they have a checklist, and they would lead this for TDM measures, which will be implemented as our project. So the, for environmental review, the project site is within the boundaries of the Transit Corridor Plan. For the Transit Corridor Plan, we adopted a, an EIR back in twenty thirteen. The project would not result in any potential impacts not previously identified in the TCP EIR. We did that analysis for the twenty eighteen project. And we went back and looked at that analysis and, and determined that no impacts were identified. So it's just subject to the same occasion measures, or subject, that apply to all TCP projects. And the project was found to be exempt for their fire inspection. So this leads me to my staff recommendation for tonight. So staff recommends that the planning commission adopt two resolutions that are attached to the staff report. One is twenty twenty-four dash oh seven, which is recommending to the city council to rezone the site from PD to TOD one. And then resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh eight, which are the project entitlements for one eleven San Bruno Avenue, which would allow them to actually build, build the building. And this concludes my presentation. If there are any questions you may have, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Do we have any clarifying questions from the commission?
I have one, one which I think I know the answer to, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. Currently, I'm thinking Avenue as it comes south, it narrows from the two south boundaries to one, like half a block of test San Bruno Avenue. And so as far as that, we are just, basically we are getting continued to have one lane continue path. And then that other lane just turns into a right on the interstate. Because it's really like a trivial, it's like half a block of a layer, it's changing.
Yes, that is correct. You, you identified it correctly, so. The southbound Huntington Lane on the north side of the intersection will become a right turn only. And it will go west on San Bruno Avenue. The, the other lane will continue to go straight across, yes.
So just the planning commission, one of this, with an item for a builder and a developer.
International Chair Dinar, your project review. That's more. And thank you, Julio, thank you to the app, it's all along, and thank you by the operator Michael Smith for all the effort that you put in, helped him for so many years. Still, you're truly amazing amount of work that the city did to help bring this project together and make it possible for the staring to start burning. Michael did an amazing job presenting, so I'm not going to go through all the data because the homage didn't touch better than I could. I'm just going to go through a few images and tell you a little bit about what this project means to us and what it changed. As the audience of this project to the there are, there are some primary goals that personally, the first is to provide as much hassle as possible. We're comfortable. Not stepping in a whole bunch of studios, but actually provide a mixture of really nice spacious units that people can live in, families can live. So we don't have all these families living town going somewhere else because the cat park is a less studios. The next two that they're calling for us needs create useful project on exhibit in public space. I think, you know, an architect that I, I acquire for twenty seven, that is, I I've said that for every, for every apartment, or so if you had a rule like that, imagine what yeah. Yeah, so. So as a when you're in there. So that's what we did here. We have a lobby for each unit, and we have open space, second floor spacing the other neighborhood. And then we have continuous fifth floor setback, so that all the units on the fifth floor have private access. And of course, on the fifth floor, as you know, we have a common open space with facility and seating. We also have enlarged lobby. The lobby, not only that's just access to the elevators, but it has a sitting area for you to sit down, go get your mail, read it, read the paper, tell the friends, the neighbors. So this is something that we wanted, we had achieved. The other issue that I can point to us is, I feel that vertical city should develop plenty of the horizon. And I believe I keep repeating myself because every time I project to the vertical city was sort of you walk down the street, nice street, San Mateo Avenue, or any commercial street. It's a lot to see. It's interesting. You look, you look up and you see a bunch of repetitive windows or just all glass. And I think that if you look at our building, it's got a lot of variation. It's got there is a way which what happened is going basically quite slow. The other thing that we wanted was, we noticed the first time around, we went to the silence, we were trying to provide some threshold. And how are we going to do that? So all these things going through, and it was a totally non-pedestrian environment. So we actually were very important. This is not cheap. He's with what he are. So we, we suggested to take our way. Give it to, give it to the city, give it to the people, give it to pedestrians. And that's how we ended up with the ball out and took a lot of working with public works and engineers and everybody tried to resolve. And I think we had it. And so even though the project is shorter now, now it's, it's definitely has all the, so it has the outdoor space. We hope that it's fine of think what's happening in the, you know, commercial market that we've been able to get a small coffee shop or small lunch place, and people connect. And the final thing is that there is a big station in San Bruno. And nobody knows. And count, we should do things in our building that we didn't station. So we have called element on the corner of San Bruno and Huntington is, is, is made a little bit taller and has some some relationship, visual relationship to the station and to many of the vertical lower apartments. And I think the other thing that, that is important is that now parts is shorter, safer in more pedestrian area. So having said that, I'm going to go through just a few slides next, please. Next, please. Okay, these, these are the images that are fingerprints. See what happens to the ball out, what, what the ball out can do for, for the project. And also we have vertical elements, okay. The four points in the building next to the entrance to the, to the lobby is, is there the solar. Next, please. I'll go through it. We don't need this. Next, please. And next. One thing that I wanted to point out, she's showing the garage plan. If you recall, we all went to Berkeley. We were there then, and we took a whole variety of parking facilities. I think this is the best of the situation. When it's okay, it's okay to do it right. It's okay. And it's not safe. It's not unsafe. The previous project is what we had in something hard here. You know, this is only too high, so it's a little bit less. But that, that's what we're doing is this. That, that's kissing. That's slightly. Oh, you go through all the lines. It's getting to the floor. Fifth floor, there, there's your, your common open space, as you can see, with the cooking area and sitting. And next, please. I'd like to show the roof line because it's important to note that all around fifth floor, it's, it's all set back, and there's, there's metal trellis, it's all around white shading for the, for the glass that's on the floor. Next, please. And this is a section, it shows again that there's a balcony each level, and then there's the setback on the fifth floor, and then all the chemical equipment screened. And next, please. I won't go through the elevations because I already spoke to the perspectives. So can we keep going, please? Please, again. The unit types, we have a lot of unit types and a lot more than that. But the units are comfortable and are large, and I think they're going to market very. Next, please. Some things that came up in previous presentations. One was carlist, and I'm showing here model number. And also, the type of treatment for the wall adjoining to the west. And that wall will have a variety of treatments in terms of panels and cement bars. And that wall will have a variety of treatments in terms of panels and cement plaster. Then several. You know, metal lattice. Fine flooring on it. Next please. Uh, we went through this. There's seven units that are affordable. Uh, three. One bedrooms, three, two bedrooms and one studio. Next please. Oh, this is our. Updated materials board. Uh, there was, we have horizontal cement. By the sixth floor, we have uh, mineral elements. Uh, in the, in the intermediate portion of the building, terracotta color. Uh, and a variety of different types of planters. And also uh, variety of treatments for the. For the ramens. Next please. This is the landscape plan. It's hard to read, so we should go next, go forward. And again, this is the fifth floor open space and this is the materials palette. Oh, just. Right. Yeah, this is the materials palette that our landscape architect selected. For the building. Next please. And some ideas for what we can use for uh, umbrellas, outdoor seating. Uh, benches, uh, et cetera. And that that concludes my presentation. I hope you enjoyed it. And uh. Thank you and I. Please go, go for us to give a hand.
Thank you for the permission. Uh, do we have anyone else from public that would like to address the planning commission on this item? Three public remarks. Right, uh, can we get a motion in both of the comments? I'm looking at the second, uh, can we take a moment please?
Chair Gerardo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bian Sadi?
Hi.
Commissioner Herman?
Hi.
Commissioner Luthi?
I'm.
Professor.
Right, we have back to planning commission for dialogue, follow up questions and multiple action.
So nobody else wants to comment on that, but we stop. Resolution twenty twenty four oh seven, ten resolution twenty twenty four, Joey.
Second.
You could do them together, quickly. I can move motion in a second. Uh. Can we get them all please?
Chair Gerardo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bian Sadi?
Hi.
Commissioner Herman?
Hi.
Commissioner Luthi?
I'm Commissioner Patrick.
Thank you.
Seven. Six, three, seven, San Mateo Avenue. Request for a new permanent amendment to have this pizza parlor in lounge to allow a bar nightclub to be allowed to for the hours of ten a.m. Ten a.m. to two a.m. Which is conditionally permitted in the central business district. For some, it has been seen section twelve point twelve eight point zero two. Um, trending in order to see to since that for transition.
Any theme here and requirements, uh, any sale here and I will be presenting on. There. Right, that's up here on the screen. Uh, the username number is. Twenty four dash. I just want to emphasize that this is an amendment. Uh, currently decided on the study this is police program that I am processing. In the red pictures here, but also also covered in Stafford as well. So some subject site people, uh, to the left, we have the subject division. Uh, it's located in the central business district. The building is six thousand nine hundred thirty points where deep is the storage structure. Uh, primarily ground floor, the ground floor. Both the restaurant operations, so the kitchen, dining area, storage space. And so on, uh, the second floor method. Or it's on their office. Since this is the central business district. So I mean, land use is very, uh, mostly commercial businesses. There are single family and multi family homes uh, to the west of the property. So the hard to use is located to the west. So let's look at surrounding properties. As I mentioned, there's a variety. Uh, we have restaurants, personal services. Uh, we have a casino, we have a model. Here, we see more of these commercial uses. And here we see some of this. The two hundred existing conditions of the subject site. Uh, it currently is a listing parlor restaurant. In twenty eighteen now can apply for a use permit. Uh, it was later reviewed by the planning permission in twenty nineteen. Uh, the request was to obtain uh, use permit to operate all beverage sales. Um, the time, the old, old standard required by use permit for any alcohol sale with a restaurant. So they obtained their. A license for beer. But this is a type forty one license. Uh, there were some conditions of approval and votes for this use permit and. One of the key ones that I want to highlight here is permitting hours. So from Monday to Thursday, it's ten a.m. to twelve a.m. And Friday through Sunday, it's ten a.m. to twenty a.m. And other people propose to change. You know. So there have been some operations with the business. Since twenty nineteen when the after use permit. One of the things I want to highlight here is that a new order is being used by um, twenty twenty one. So one of these is that it allows restaurants to convert uh, retail space or storage space and to better from. Restaurant space um, without leaving that, those extra parking spaces. So the restaurant. Point twenty one applied for building permit to convert that storage space into. Some dining space. So here we have um, a photograph of dining space before. The tenure improvements that were involved that shortly, but part of that building permit. Uh, was to incorporate two service bars, big seating areas, stage, they also push right there. A wall to allow this room, it's all separate room. You know, with other electric. Under key change with the twenty point one, the amendment was that restaurant sales were down for many restaurants. Um, it's now a mission in the conjunction. So no use permit is required. Uh, that being said, bars. Primary purpose is to sell, still required use permit. But the restaurant upgraded their. ABC license from a type forty one to type forty seven, also twenty twenty one. We're not going to. Okay. Hundred into bar nightclub and lounge use. And here are some details about their proposal operation. So they want to repurpose their private dining. Seeing area that we saw as well, for personal private, so in relation to events. They will have this full service bar uh, with the type forty seven licenses and sell alcohol to. Two a.m. So the. We should not take it out. Two a.m. which complies with K B C. Who they says. So this. In Sunday, they will twenty one. Yes, so those will come back at nine p.m. and ten a.m. Um. So with that building permit that they applied for twenty point one, um, as I mentioned, it came with a stage, big seating areas and a bar. So here we see the stage that was constructed. Uh, we see some of the case scene areas as well. See more free scene where. For leads to. Into perfect. Kitchen, we see uh. Um, install or call service bar. Since this will be used for nightclub events, they have also installed a sound system uh, for their sake. So here is what the project aims to be, which is. Nightclub and assembly room for. Dance events as we see on the left, also for live performances, uh, bands or comedians or so on. This, this group kind of combination. Some details on this room is they could be recurring for. For the listeners and they watching this, the use of under tables and chairs. So or dining events or they're being the speaker and they want to set. Rows of chairs as we see here. Presentation and producer with those chairs or they could pull chairs and kind of dance there. With this uh, proposed land use, the occupancy group will upgrade to A two. And that comes with uh, different requirements to fire. Uh, one of those is to meet the total. The most permitted. So for assembly use, uh, on the technical line, this room could accommodate. Two man patrons for dining, it would be a hundred thirty two. So there's that difference of seventy seven patrons for those assembly events. I'll go into a long system. And so when. As we see here. Done known for bars, nightclubs, lounges, uh, and this is central business district, it is conditionally permitted. So the condition is by this requirement. Maybe by beauty code. Sport. Science is served on pole and through the secondary. So the teaching will attend. So. At three a.m. So the movement of the life commission is to validate surrounding uses, uh, building regulations and whether this is consistent with. Plan and staff and the planning commission credit post credentials. Of people for business operation. So some of the conditions of approval that you find in the stack for that is the tactic one. Um, there's forty four, but I want to highlight two of the key ones. First, the existing use permit from twenty nineteen was sent in. Permit proposed today uh, was received. So that would come with the eight two plus well, uh, noise levels plus combined with the income. So thirty five guys of over thirty sixty and nine. Storage windows and such remain posed to. Red noise from the building. The business owner is then be required to advertise. And through the manager, I can provide some information for the patients that only produce these events, letting them know that there are. Really lots and discourage them from using private lots, uh, on residential streets. With this, um, A two occupancy group. Sprinklers and a firework system is required, so they will go through the necessary precautions. Fire marshal. They are responsible for maintaining their ABC offices, also ensure that there's alcohol servers. Yes, certainly. And lastly, for these twenty. One over that's uh, these evening entertainment event. It's like they're. It's required. So. This is a summary of staff's findings. Uh, overall, we find that this country still with the general plan is uh, good. Provide the, I'm telling you, with the youth lanes, which is for assembly uses.
On the, the sound by models, have they ever been measured in the past or were this recently new?
So, uh, are you, are you asking with other businesses?
I'm, I'm knowing for, I I suppose for any of the businesses that are in the same area, but this the business specifically, I'm just curious. If there's, um, I just don't know how it's measured and how it's bought at.
Yeah, so one thing, uh, and like something that Max has done is he's bought a decimal meter. Uh, so he had it on site and he will be measuring for the proper rights of when they are hosting those events. But with this one, as we are requiring them to uh, mean those noise levels mainly because we want to set it to. The residential ones, right, street. So that's the reason why. We know with these type of land uses, there could be complaints um, regarding noise levels, especially if they're able to operate until two a.m. So that's the reason why. Great machine.
Another question is, are there any other businesses um, on the street, like a bar or nightclub? That have um, specified hours? Just curious, uh.
They may have a type forty seven license. They are only allowed to sell alcohol, but they're so two a.m. Uh, now it's just alcohol sales. Does a very.
Where she. I mean, it didn't.
Two businesses on some. Central business district. Uh, so we have those on silver and.
In.
Where's party shows and spread across the street. Um, you know, party shows. Two. This one, which you don't know what's right, but that business, uh, it's kind of active there for a little some time, so. From what I know, there is a requirement condition.
Thank you.
There's a one more business that could use, sells alcohol as A one. A one, which is the way to pass from, uh, our jokes, so there's another. Who, what is selling?
They just sushi stay open until two a.m. and they have these serve here at Sake, I think.
Yes.
Any other questions from planning mission? Uh, Max, sir, your architect, is there anything you'd like to say in planning commission before we see you in other public comments, please?
Uh, I'd like to thank you all, all of you and also especially the media. Uh, because uh, this has been going on for a long time, a lot of the city members and. Uh, we serve a lot of community problems. We do toy distribution for from weekend, so in Christmas and any other. Friends with benefits of that, so talk about game about. So a lot of businesses broke. We we built this place. Keeping that in mind, but this is for the, this is for the sample. We only do very. Sure, not every weekend, we do some weekend with companies, which is. That's how we survive, the tough time in the right now. So. Oh, we don't know these but frankly, but I have very well aware of my names. I, I stay in community with them. We make sure. That's where the laws and so I've been small way. There were, in the past, there was some player during the week, totally the terrorists. In the meantime. We are continuing our business pizza and a lot of community, a lot of community mates we do. Uh, eating, so what you guys may fair. So I thank you, every one of you, uh, for considering this and. You know, uh, hope this has and we continue with, we still long way to go as far as expense flies. Then I'm forward, but I have to, uh, and we make sure this is viable and still continue better than the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Um, do we have any speaker cards and do we have anything that we need to acknowledge, other thing? Okay, um, can I get a motion in both of the comments? And please move.
Chair Gerardo?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bian Sadi?
Hi.
Commissioner Herman?
Hi.
Commissioner Luthi?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're getting back to planning for. My lawyer. On the wire, I'm here.
Space in really high see the space in a building from being. Well, able to be utilized. I know that for a long time it was not good to be utilized. And I think that that. To be really wonderful for your business. And I think also, um, they will continue to be a benefit. In in space. I don't know.
And it's always open, if any one of you have any event which we can benefit the community, you guys, well, anytime.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, underscore as well that the, I know the owner at this pizza town extensively about the benefits of the community, I have seen and experienced the benefit of the community. Uh, the toy drive during the holidays is something really good. Uh, they have probably the best, most realistic Santa Claus I've ever seen in my life. Appears every year there, have some Santa Claus, if you've ever seen him. Uh, so I think that it's legitimate, I I believe it and I've seen it and I've experienced it. Uh, so I just wanted to really underscore what the benefit of the community is, um, any other questions or comments from planning? Right, so, um, if there's other factors or comments, I'd like to motion to, um. Of the movies for me, U P two four dash zero zero five, based on finding two one two three and this is over one three more seconds. Bottom in the second.
Question, what you'd like?
What?
Question, Harmon.
I.
Question, Lizzie. And Rosalyn.
Drinks all we do.
What are you singing in a carry out?
So hopefully now we is getting into the right track, so I can advertise it, hopefully we can do some of the stuff.
Right, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, we read along. See, seven C one fifty Florida Avenue, I give a question. Request for a use permits will allow for a new two story duplex and an accessory dwelling unit. On an infill lot pursuant to one point two hundred point zero four B, you know, San Bruno Municipal Code. And for an architectural reimpermit pursuant to S B M C section equal like two hundred point zero seven zero. Turning it over to city staff for reference.
Alright, so I'm Maria Venda, is for one bit for the avenue. And we first review request for a new spirit to allow for a new two story duplex and accessory dwelling unit on an infill lot. One fifty Florida is located in the city Milton Avenue and Huntington Avenue with a lot size of four thousand five hundred square feet. The property is in the R two zoning district, which is low density residential. The existing conditions comprise a partially demolished structure with trash and debris on the property, uh, the previous owner. Decided self or redevelopment. The surrounding properties comprise of single story homes and two story housing. Moving on, I will be discussing the proposed project. Which it entails the construction of a new two story duplex, uh, residential structure in an attached, uh, A D U. With the total floor area being three thousand thirty nine square feet, including the A D U and three thousand seven hundred fifty nine square feet, including the A D U. So the proposed project, um. According to R two zoning regulations, there are restrictions on the floor area ratio, which limits. The amount of floor area relative to the size. That allows a floor area ratio point five five and the proposed conditions are point six five. Uh, we are waving the seven hundred and twenty square feet of the proposed A D U. Uh, from the point being zero floor area ratio to the point six five. Cities are required to grant ministerial approval for each use, streamlining the process. Moreover, you can use up to eight hundred square feet to benefit from its energy, sparing them from various environmental requirements. Such as more area ratio and curb surface surfaces, lot size and lot coverage. It's worth noting that cities are prohibited from opposing object zoning or sub, uh, subdivision standards that would yield A D U smaller than eight hundred square feet. In accordance with the San Bruno Municipal Code, the subject lot. Uh, sized at four thousand five hundred square feet falls below the minimum. Side area of five thousand square feet for interior lots, classifying it as substandard. Uh, San Bruno Municipal Code, substandard lot, uh. The cessate back about these ten percent of the lot width or a minimum of. For this a lot, a ten percent setback would require five feet on mall sides. The proposed attached A D U meets the setback requirements with five feet on the sides. So how do you use the returns the five feet on the side, nine feet, ten inches back of rear, conforming to San Bruno Municipal Code for accessory dwelling units? And. Although the front setback of seventeen feet doesn't lead to a standard fifteen feet, San Bruno Municipal Code allows flexibility due to the. Conditions of the neighboring in the neighborhood where the average setback of improved lots is less than the standard requirement. Moving forward to the floor plans. The first floor layout, which will be unit one, will include two bedrooms in red, one office in purple. One open space living room and kitchen. And two bathrooms and two car garage. The primary access to the main rooms are in red from the right side yard and front door and front door, while the A D U access is from the rear yard. The second floor layout will consist of three bedrooms. One office, one living room and kitchen and two bathrooms. And for the accessory dwelling. We have two bedrooms, one living room, kitchen and two bathrooms. And then if we were to look inside of the patients, here we see the facade articulation. And architectural design elements have been provided on all sides of the proposed residence. Variations in wall points with set, uh, setbacks and set and pop outs. Uh, what is important to note is that the architectural review could be meeting on May ninth. There were concerns regarding the window materials and transparency on the second story. The applicant must since change the window material to frosted glass, which can be observed here on the west elevations. And then on the east elevations. Based on findings one through three and conditions of approval, one through twenty eight, staff recommends approval. The planning commission is the final approval body for this project, there is a ten day appeal period from the date of the planning commission's final action. Appeal shall be made in writing filed with the city clerk within ten days after the final action of the planning commission. That concludes my presentation tonight, if there are any questions, I am happy to answer.
Right, wonderful presentation, thank you, uh, any questions from planning commission? Um, do we, have any people came and with us online, or anything from them, anything they wanted to share?
Hello. Hi, this is the, I'm the owner calling you.
Hi, call me, can you? Yes.
Hi, Chris.
Is anyone you would like to send to the planning commission on this item?
Uh, sorry, was that a question for me? I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, yeah, oh, it's okay, yeah, question for you, is there anything we would like to share with the planning commission?
Um. No, so I I think this is just a very standard duplex building and I think we went over most of the concerns in the architecture review. With the glass for privacy. So I don't think there's much I need to add.
And I remember going standing on that architecture review and we can tell some concerns from the neighbors on both sides, so I do appreciate the, uh, the concession. Privacy glass, um, and I. Happy to see your presence. So. On the comment, ready to be written, or we have anyone with three K, anything that we need to work with? It's a bit more, I'm actually on the comment. Okay, I'll actually moving, let's go. What's the second, can we get a vote? Yes.
Done.
So then, question Harmon sounded like a question. Number, number, what was it? Uh, there would be nothing to room that we approve use permit, U P twenty four double O six and. Architecture review permit, A R twenty four double O seven, based on findings one date and conditions of approval one to twenty eight. How does that?
You're the rather.
Yes.
Question, what you'd like?
What?
Question, Harmon.
I.
Question, Lizzie, provide your opinion.
Alright, thank you to the commissioners, moving along to item number eight, conduct for business eight eight. Amazon project Scoping, one thousand San Antonio Avenue, A P N zero two zero four two one, four two one, zero three one. Zero two zero, four two one, zero two one. I don't know why I started reading this, I feel like now I can't stop, zero one five, one six four two sixty, zero fifteen, one six four, one ninety. So I feel like I have to finish. Uh, turning on my city for, uh.
Share, I love the very introduction, um, good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public. Um, this next project is. Info Avenue, which is a proposed Amazon warehouse and distribution facility. Uh, staff and the applicant party have determined that a full environmental impact report is required for this scoping work. Um, that being said, this item will serve as a notice of preparation for N O P meeting or scoping meeting for the project. And so we'll begin with some introductions, uh, my name is Chrissy and I'm one of the planners. And I'm joined here by Matt Noise with Amy Jane Powers. Um, we are not joined by the applicant, but we have been working with A O Architects as well as Seema and you know, who is the resident owner of the property, which is Amazon. So to keep us on track for this item, I'm gonna go over the purpose of this day of the meeting. This year will give a overview description of the project and the environmental process. This is, this is also an opportunity for, excuse me. This is also an opportunity for staff and the allocate to receive input on a scope of what will be analyzed during the environmental process. This means we'll be looking at different environmental topics, alternatives to the project, attainable mitigation measures, and any environmental issues that come along the way. Just to give you a heads up on the agenda, we'll start with the presentation and then the opportunity for comment later on. So to provide some context on the site, one thousand San Antonio is made up of four different parcels across both San Bruno and South San Francisco. We're looking at the parcel in the yellow and then. Of San Bruno City Limits. And then green, we have South San Francisco, so it splits just at the top northmost part of that parcel. Um, included in this review, we're looking at a couple entitlements from the planning division that's going to be conditional use permit. An architect for review permit, and a lot line adjustment for law and culture. And here's another look at what that parcel would look like for this current way of how it splits. Based on these two cities, San Bruno does make this an industrial use for our general plan. And then South San Francisco does the same, but at a higher density, so there's a mixed industrial high. Zoning is also very similar where San Bruno, an M one or industrial zone, South City is also mixed industrial high, so not much really changes. And through some existing conditions, uh, through some photos that we took. Staff went out in April of this year and we got to walk in and around the site, that was pretty cool. But the top photo is from. From the FedEx site in South San Francisco, and that should give you as a general an idea of the existing building, it's a very large building. And we're looking at, um, the bottom picture, which is from San Antonio Avenue on the San Bruno side. And again, we did a walk around, um, the entire building and it's, this had been it for quite some time. This was an existing Sky Park parking facility, so it was, um, in operation for quite some time. It closed down in twenty twenty, um, February twenty twenty. And so we can say. Here's some photos of the inside, um, completely empty except for a pile of. I guess soda blocks is the best way to describe it. So we'll, we'll move on from that. And the project description, uh, of course, to make this warehouse possible, we need to demolish existing Sky Park Long Term Airport parking facility. And so, and associated service part of that, and like I said, Sky Park was about four years ago. Project scope would construct a ninety seven thousand square foot warehouse, that include. Up to nine thousand five hundred square feet of interior office space. This would also include rooftop parking and, um, landscaping improvements as well as circulation improvements to the site. Just to emphasize this facility will not show into the public, so it'll be operating twenty four seven, I won't be open to customer for returns or pickups or anything like that. Like I said, once constructed, the project will operate twenty four hours per day, seven days a week, and the warehouse, the distribution facility. Um, the term last ground delivery station means that semi trucks will deliver. Most of the merchandise to this facility and then smaller delivery vans, as well as Amazon Flex operations. They'll meet that last round trip to bring the package to the final destination. And going into the site lands, this is what current situation is. The empty warehouse gives a lot of existing, uh, lots. There's an empty apartment area over here, by that one, the building footprint in blue. And moving on to. Co site plan, you know, you'll notice that the building footprint significantly reduces. I mean, means the landscape improves. There's also various parking lots, I will explain what those uses are later on. So here's kind of a rundown of what that current situation would be. We're the proposed building in yellow, and starting from the left, you have a parking lot, right at the entrance, about hundred and twenty spaces. And then rooftop parking as well. To the west side, or excuse me, to the east of the site, we have eighty nine spaces. And we have forty active van loading spaces. So that means when delivery vans are getting ready to be loaded, that's where the link, service workers will. Be able to move the packages from the warehouse to these vans. And once they departed, we have also spaces for the van that have been queued up, so those are vans that are waiting to be loaded. Additionally, we have seven semi truck spaces. For a total of four hundred and thirty eight parking spaces, uh, that does not increase the semi truck spaces, because these are just regular parking spaces. So site plan also proposes a new face that moves around the perimeter of the lot. Actually, I also wanted to highlight some south San Antonio reversals. So in the green, you have the South San Francisco reversal, in and in blue, the San Bruno. Currently being used as a sort of drive aisle to the, uh, rear parking lots. That will change, so the drive aisles will retain. And it also will be serviced by the saw that. For the segment queue. It's gonna be just that same, this sort of strict plan. Going to be able to go through to this parking space and then onto the rooftop part. If we move on to elevation from the proposed warehouse. Highlighting. Leading to the aspects, we have the highway three eighty over here. And we also have a van loading under this canopy and then rooftop part. So this is the van loading from the side and the van as if we were to. Stand right in front of it. Right, west elevation, you have three E on this side. We'll rooftop parking again. And then the van loading as well on the website. And here for ramp to that rooftop parking. They have a material and color palette as recommended by the app. And here are a couple writers of the project. This is from San Antonio Avenue, and we have that drive aisle, so all the delivery vans. And then this portion would be associated or employee part of it. There's another view of San Antonio Avenue. Now we have a bird sign view from above interstate to the, so this is gonna be that rooftop parking that we talked about. The semi trucks over here, and then the ramp to the rooftop parking. And along this side. This is San Antonio. And along this side, this is San Mateo. And I also wanted to highlight the circulation plan. So this is, like I said, a twenty four hour operation. Uh we're gonna start with eight P M to eight A M. We're just imagining all of us regular people are ending our days. Um current work days, these are. And around. Around ten P M, the semi trucks have arrived. And we were expecting fourteen semi trucks during ten to eight A M. This is to offset the traffic um as expected and to avoid that worrying of hours. So they look coming from Shaw Road. And they make this trip over here. They've done a lot of their parcels, so they're practiced, and they may be out hopefully by eight A M. But like I thought of mine are employees ships. So every time there's a little person logo, that's what a new ship of employees enters a warehouse. We're moving on from eight A M to eight P M. So during the eight time. We have that boy of ships again, so this is continued. From eight A M, or excuse me, from nine to eleven A M. The delivery, the delivery vans that have been loaded during this time shouldn't depart. And after eight to ten hours, you would return. We also have the Amazon Flex operations from four thirty to six thirty. So these are gonna be independent contractors that come in. They'll provide some service, they'll um have their personal vehicles loaded. They should not be taking any part. So they should in and out of facilities within fifty minutes. They go through the circulation path. And like I said, after eight to ten hours of the delivery of dance services, they would return to their previous spots for their previous months. But then. That start all over again. All right, and that's all for city stuff. I'm gonna hand it over to Matt and discuss the environmental portion.
Good evening commissioners and members of the public. Um my name is Natalie Noyes. I'm a senior project manager, David James Powers of Associates, and I will be. Uh working with the city to prepare the E I R for the project. Next slide. So tonight, I'll be providing the overview of CEQA and the environmental review process, including the purpose of tonight's meeting. Um what information is included in the E I R and next steps for input for the public. One of the primary functions of CEQA is to inform decision makers and members of the public of the potential environmental impacts that could result from a project. The CEQA process requires that significant impacts be mitigated, mitigated or avoided through mitigation measures or alternative methods. Lastly, the CEQA process is intended to be collaborative. And allow for public participation in both the scoping process, which is where we're, where we're, excuse me, where we're at now, and during drafting of the E I R. Excellent. So the city issued a notification informing the public that an E I R was being prepared for the project. Uh CEQA requires that the hierarchy circulate for a period of thirty days. The purpose of the N O P and the scoping process is to get input from the public and other agencies about what issue should be addressed in the E I R. So we're currently about halfway through that thirty day process. Um and our meeting tonight to solicit input from all of you on the scope of the E I R for the project. So we're in the very early stages of the environmental review process. Um so the any, the E I R process begins with the issuance of the N O P. Um and during the notice of preparation, a scoping meeting is held. Following the scoping meeting, the city and the consulting team will be drafting the E I R. Um this includes preparing all the associated technical studies, which we'll touch on in a few slides coming up. Uh and it's anticipated that the E I R will be drafted during the summer and the early fall. The draft E I R is anticipated to circulate in late fall twenty twenty four. And during the circulation of the draft E I R, the public will have an opportunity to comment on the document. And then following the forty five day circulation of the draft E I R. Final E I R will be prepared, on which will include responses to any comments received um during the draft E I R circulation. Um and will be posted ten days prior to any hearing to approve or deny the project. Um and so there are two primary opportunities for the public to comment. Um on the project's environmental um scope, and that's now during N O P process and during the draft E I R circulation. So the purpose of tonight's scoping meeting, I think Christie touched on this a little bit already, um is to get you back on the scope uh and content of the E I R. Um we are early in the environmental review process, and this is not a hearing to approve or deny the project. Um along these lines, this is also not a time to share conclusions regarding the environmental analysis since that's currently happening. Excellent. So the E I R will analyze um the potential environmental effects of the proposed warehouse and distribution facility and related infrastructure. The E I R will address all the required resource areas under CEQA which are listed on the slide here. Uh it is anticipated that the key environmental issues will be air quality, cultural resources. Greenhouse gas emissions, noise and transportation, and technical studies are being prepared um to address all of those topic areas. Um and, and any sort of mitigation measures that are identified will be disclosed in the E I R. Excellent. According to CEQA, an E I R must describe a reasonable range of alternatives to a proposed project that could easily attain most of the basic project objectives. And would avoid or substantially lessen any of the proposed project's significant effects. Additionally, CEQA requires that any new project alternative be analyzed. Um and during the E I R process, the E I R must evaluate the comparative merits of each of the alternatives. Uh the range of alternatives in an E I R is governed by the rule of reason um that requires an E I R to. Requires that an E I R only evaluate those alternatives necessary to permit a reasonable choice. Um meaning that an E I R need not consider every possible alternative. Um only those that would reduce uh impacts and would still meet basic project objectives. So the focus of the alternatives analysis is on reducing significant impacts of the proposed project. So now that we've thought over the CEQA process and the purpose of today's scoping meeting, I think we'll be moving on to some comments on the scoping process.
Okay, that's all from this back. Um if you have any additional comments, we're ready to continue.
Certainly. Was shown earlier. Was uh. Depending on how. Semis are arriving. This area in the first place, we anticipated that they're coming in from the door, like that by the Products Avenue interchange is that the primary. I know I have heard living in, can uh tell it myself, some complaints from my neighbors in North Bel Air about. Issues with semis coming in from the San Bruno Avenue, one on one, turning right on six to get off the road in that area. Then conversely, returning along seven. Um. Because those roads are really not suitable for large view. But apparently that does happen, so.
Right, and so. The applicant has promised us that the charge will present only option for, again, conversations with South San Francisco, obviously. That's a uh, it impacts their infrastructure, so they're uh. They're actually listed uh as a responsible agency, the preparation of this E I R. And so uh, yeah, one of the things that we will be doing when we condition the project. Is uh, is obviously to address that situation. Amazon has promised us that they will basically be telling all the drivers. So inevitably, we'll make it one or two that don't get the message back. You know, hopefully time uh that, you know, we will make sure that they don't come in. The other direction, will leave the other direction.
Spring park in operation. Uh when I last checked their business license details, I went from nineteen eighty seven to two thousand twenty. Um I don't know a lot about parking industry, but are there any substantial like expensive uh. Issues with the soil, with contaminants, with the making of the vein, they were mediated. Yeah, it is provided um within this project description, I can read this out, this is provided by the developer. So given the project's site history from having underground storage tanks, U S Ts. Containing so contingency plan will be advised, guided on the remediation and or removal of contaminated soils. Should any be discovered during site preparation activity. Right, thank you.
Great, any other?
So we talked about right enough far, should I see many of the folks here wanting to talk or just? You know, it's just to accept a comment, so there's no official opening of public comment periods or any of that, so. Uh but people can now, uh we've, we've taken in to consideration your comments that you've made and questions you've made tonight, and also. Um the written comments that we get from the various agencies. Uh those will all be addressed in, in the preparation of the E I.
Okay, understood. Um so with everyone's permission, I want to move on to law. Item number nine, comments from staff.
Um you know, this is the first time I will not be asking for members of the E I R C sets for changing our review processes. As of July first. And um but I do, I will be sending out an email um just uh different than I will be doing this. I'm checking your availability for July ninth for a uh study session with the city council. Is to talk about participation in our regional initiative. Um so um you, you can either let us know this evening if you're available or.
I'm just saying again, meaning.
Yeah, well. Yeah, I'm not sure. But it's gonna be part of the regular city council meeting or. Or before, so I don't know how long it's on. We need to reset that. July ninth, Tuesday, July eight. Okay.
I don't know. Your, your, um. That's helpful, thank you so much. Anything else on that item? Uh no. All right, uh pretend comments with numbers. Any, I mean, which of the like, I'm like a comment. Your fire cheers. Oh. So your meeting will be now, next regular French, which will be out on July sixteen, twenty twenty four at seven P M.